All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order if we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Mrs. Spear too? Ms. Laird?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Price, Mrs. Spear did tell me earlier this afternoon she wouldn't make it, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting on March 27th, 2023, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird, could I have a second?
Second.
Say goodbye, Ms. Lewis, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions. Next up, legislative report.
Nothing this evening.
Okay. Walk-on items, you have two walk-on items?
Yes, sir. Item two, recognition, and then item thirteen is just three additional names on that list for resignations that came in late today.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So as we get through the agenda, we'll get to that part of it, so.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, moving on to hearing of the public, if anyone from the public would like to address the board, they can come to the podium, state your name and address, can ask the board anything. All right. Move on then to superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Price. Tonight, we've got Mr. Anway and another part of his job, he does many, many things in the district. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Anway for our presentation for our work session this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Detweiler. Good evening, Ms. Parkhurst, Mr. Detweiler, members of the board. This evening, we will be giving a brief update. Mr. Tim Warren, our transportation supervisor, and Ms. Tracy Rush, our child nutrition service supervisor, will be giving some updates about their specific departments. I'm going to turn the floor over to them so they can present their departments, and afterwards, certainly if there are any questions, be open to answer anything that we can. So with no further ado.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Warren from Transportation Department, my office manager Pam Crawford, our fleet manager is Eric Hofacker, our secretary Michelle Billow, and our mechanic Hunter Hofacker, they all keep us going every day. So our daily bus usage, we have twenty-nine routes that are, that run every single day. At the beginning of August, the average fleet was 2007. We've added ten buses, we got five over the summer, and then we had five more this year, this past couple of weeks that came in. Took our average bus in April up to 2018, when you figure a bus's average is fifteen years. I think we were struggling there, and with the help, thank everybody, the community, everyone for getting that in. I feel a lot safer with our bus average going up to that point for our daily bussing.
Tim, if I may, you just pointed something out, you can go back. Two thousand and seven was the average. If you said fifteen years is kind of the average age for a bus, our average age was the average of when you would retire a bus. Am I saying that correct? That, that just tells you what, what shape we were in, so I wanted to point that out. Thank you, Tim.
And then our fuel purchases for the year, our propane buses, we purchased sixteen thousand, three seventy-eight. The price per gallon roughly two twenty-nine. Fuel cost thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for the year so far. And on our diesel, we purchased forty-three thousand, nine hundred and three gallons at three eighteen. We're looking at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and seventeen total fuel purchase just for this year to, to get through. On an average, we've gone through one hundred and forty-one days of school year, twenty-three hundred and seventy-six miles is roughly what those twenty-nine buses put on in a day. For a hundred and forty-one days, we're looking at three hundred and thirty-five thousand, fifty-eight miles that we've traveled this year. So going through that, the six buses that are propane, roughly four hundred and eighteen point two miles a day for those, fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six miles a year to date. And then for trips, seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighteen miles, for a total of seventy-six thousand, four eighty-four for our propane buses. Then on the twenty-three diesel, nineteen fifty-eight for the route miles per day, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, ninety-two miles year to date, twenty-one thousand, four hundred on trip miles, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred total. So for the year, we're at three hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven point three miles on all our buses.
Tim, I gotta ask you, I should know this, I think I'm right, the, the six propane represents the three that are coming? No, okay, because we do have a couple of used ones we're looking at, right? Okay, I just want to make sure I clarified that, so the six that we've had.
That'll be three more on.
Looking at three, okay, thank you.
And then, so there's a breakdown of our regular field trips for Ross Middle School and the elementary schools, they've taken a total of a hundred and fifty-nine trips, sixty-nine hundred and seventy-four miles for those. Athletic events at the high school, we had three hundred and four trips, twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and six miles. And the middle school had sixty-nine trips at six thousand, forty-nine miles, total of three seventy-three with thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five miles total.
I'm gonna keep interrupting you just because it's my nature. Mr. Anway, you think our new league will affect the, the mileage on that?
I was just going to add, Mr. Detweiler, our hope is with us joining the new league that this will reduce, as close as I can calculate, I'm hoping about ten percent is what we're going to be reduced. It's not going to be extravagant.
Right.
But we do lose the Lima trip, which that's extensive mileage that's added, and most of the other schools are basically the same distance away. So the Lima trip is where we will pick up, all right, should say we will lose some mileage.
Thank you.
And then for total routes and trips, five, or trips for both athletic events and regular trips, five hundred and thirty-two, thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine miles total for that. And then on that, all I've added on this one was just the average mile, four point seven for a propane bus, six point seven for a diesel bus. And then just a couple of fun facts that I ran across, figured out, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, fifty-eight miles, you go around the equator thirteen and a half times. You add the trips onto that, and you get another one and a half runs around, and there are fifteen total trips around the earth.
Okay.
Amazing.
Get on the bus.
And then our driver overview, we have six drivers, less than a year seniority, six at one to five years, we have nine between five and ten years, and then one at ten to fifteen, three of them at fifteen to twenty, and four of them at twenty years plus. And those eight there from ten, ten years to the twenty and greater, hundred and seven years there in experience. So quite a bit there. Two hundred, there is two hundred and fifty-eight total years of experience. The average driver is eight point nine years, and the average age of a driver is fifty-eight point three years old. And I'm way below that. That's a summary of transportation. My year and a half, I've had a great time with it, interesting, learning a lot.
How long did you drive before you became the director?
I started driving in September of two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. Tim, just real quick, maybe just tell the board, and I, I know it's been a struggle to find drivers, right? It seems to ebb and flow, right? Instead, we get, we get a couple in the pipeline to move in and get spots, and then we lose a couple on the other end. What's current status?
Right now, I have one driver training. I have one that I hate to say steal, trying to steal from.
From another district, shh, no, yeah, shh.
That's okay, you can. And then I, I talked to a girl this week, and she's very interested and wants to start training this summer.
Okay.
But to your point, I'll get three in.
Yeah.
I don't know over the summer if anybody's planning on retiring. I haven't heard anything as of right now, but we'll cross that bridge when it gets here.
Yes, sir.
I would like to add to that, one of the things we do run into is we just recently certified, I believe, three bus drivers. They drove for us about six months, and they decided bus driving really wasn't what they expected it to be. And then they, they leave, and it isn't that they're being sold by a different district, it's that bus driving isn't for everybody, and it's a, it is a very difficult task. And once they get, go through all of the training, which is intense, they get their CDL, and then they use it, and then they decide this really isn't what I thought it was going to be, so we do lose drivers often as well.
And there's other applications for that license beyond schools too, so that's another thing.
Yeah, it opens up a lot of other career paths once they get their CDL classification.
You're looking roughly thirty hours of drive time, and then I'll bet just learning the pre-trip inspection, you're probably looking at another hundred hours personal time that you put into it. Not an easy task, it's a real accomplishment, but like I said, when you get it behind that wheel, it becomes a whole different animal then.
Nothing like it.
So if someone were interested, let's say, in the career of bus driving, what would they need to do? You might have somebody listening right now, you just perk their ears up a little.
I would say come, set up an appointment with me to talk. I can go through what it takes, I have a, a listing of what it takes, what their time is, rough breakdown, and we can work it out from there to see if they want to, you know, pursue it.
Good question on the buses. So as we've incorporated a little bit more and more of the propane, do you see much difference between benefits or disadvantages propane compared to diesel? Not really.
Not the the drivers feel the propains don't have the range that a diesel bus does. But.
Beyond that, pretty comparable.
Some of the, very similar. Yeah, some of the positive things with the propane buses, they don't have to be plugged in, in the winter, like a diesel bus. The maintenance on them is considerably less because they don't have to have regens on the engines, as well as the environmental fluid that has to be added to them. So when you see the difference in miles per gallon from four point seven to six point seven, and then you factor in the cost of the propane compared to the cost of diesel, and as we all know, the price of fuel in general continues to escalate. Propane's a little more stable that way, as far as it price escalation, so one thing that limits us probably with propane more than anything is, is the size of our fueling station. We did put a new fueling station in three years ago, and we can only fuel so many buses in the morning, so we are very limited. As Mr. Detweiler referred to, we are looking at picking up three, three additional propane buses from another district that they're going more propane buses, but they're switching brands, and the brand that they have kind of half and half right now, they're getting rid of, is the brand that we currently use. So we can pick them up very inexpensively with low mileage on the buses, but it's, it's, there's pluses and minuses when you talk to drivers, they do like them because they're quiet. One of the big things about them is they're very quiet, so some drivers like that, some drivers don't like that. But there are definitely advantages to the propane over the diesel, especially in winter driving. And believe it or not, one of the biggest hottest things in transportation right now is bringing back gas buses. You're waiting about four to five years to get a gas bus there, that ordered out right now to go back to gas buses because of the extensive maintenance involved with diesel buses.
On the, so getting these three propane used ones from another district, is that going to put us about at our max as far as our fueling station goes for propane?
We're looking at putting them on lower end, lower mileage routes, just to help out with that, so.
Tom, what's the, what's the cost to increase our capacity in the fueling station? And do we have the space? I mean.
We do have the space. What we run into is a whole new set of regulations with the fire department because of the amount of propane we would have on site in the proximity to our fueling station to a neighborhood. And that's why it was sized at the way it was, was to get us under where we needed to be. We could look, we could relocate it to a different location in the compound in the facility, but it would be pretty expensive, and I'm not certain it would, it would be a wise investment right now for the district just because of that. As I said, the operations aren't a whole lot different, it's just that there are some advantages to propane buses.
And I guess if they're looking at going back to gas buses, then you might, you know, long-term might not be.
Who knows where that's going to end up? There's all kinds of different fuels, possible, potential fuels out there to utilize buses, electric buses, that's another issue. We were, we actually applied to get some electric buses to give them a try through the federal fund funding source. We hit every source that we can get when it comes to buses, anything, anybody, any money anybody's giving away, we tried to get, so.
They got another one coming up here that we're gonna start looking at.
Well, this, this was great. You know, Tim, this, this takes care of, you know, the, the beginning, the middle, and the end of the day of our children's safety. It's the start of their school day experiences, the, you know, the bus ride and the end of the school day experience, and then when you take a look at the financial impact that has in the district, that's a lot to manage, and it's truly appreciated.
That's what any new driver coming in, I tell them, we're the first person these kids see in the morning, the last person they see. So we've got to make sure we're positive on both ends of that so that they know that we're on their side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for, for having me up here to share a little information about the food service department. So I don't have Josie included in the next slide, but I want to give a shout out to her for working every day, at least a portion of her morning, on helping us secure subs so that we're fully staffed in the nutrition department because it's been a challenge just with people being out sick. We are fully staffed right now, and that's been pretty consistent, so we're blessed to have the staff that we do and the staffing level that we do. So I also am struggling to read that from all the way over here. We've got a kitchen manager designated in each of the six buildings, and our kitchen managers are the ones who on a daily basis make sure that the kids get fed. So we plan, and we have our, our daily processes written down, and when something doesn't work out, the kitchen managers are the ones that are responsible for making sure that every student that goes through the line actually gets a meal, so quick shout out to them. We've got full-time and part-time staff in each of the buildings, and yes, that's, we've got thirty-one staff in the department, not including Josie and myself, so that's thirty-three altogether. In this slide, I wanted to kind of point out that the nationwide trend has seen a decrease in meal participation because we've had to return to paid meal status. So through last year, we were able to provide free meals because of the COVID funding. We had to go back to free and reduced meal application status this year across the country, and so everyone has kind of seen a decrease in meal participation strictly because the students aren't all getting free meals the way they were last year. We've seen that trend in our kitchens also, but we've also seen in the last couple of months, our participation has increased. So our, our general participation is down, if you look at it from an annual standpoint at, at this point in the year. But my kitchen managers are reporting increased participation from the start of the year, especially at breakfast. So breakfast has been kind of a focus because it's, it plays a big role in student outcomes and educational outcomes, so that's kind of been a focus, especially at the elementary level. I know we had spoken about commodity usage at a, at a couple of the meetings that we've had throughout the year. Our commodities are basically foods that are funded from the government that we get allocated annually, and over the last couple of years, due to supply chain interruption and production issues, shortage of staffing, all kinds of things that had interrupted our availability of our commodity products. Our commodity usage was down, which was a trend that was also seen kind of nationwide. This year, we're on track to use probably the highest percentage of our commodity allocation that we've been able to use, I would say, in the last six years. So we probably won't be at a hundred percent because there has been still some interruption, and there've been some decrease in production of school-specific products. So a lot of our producers are finding that it's difficult to meet the child nutrition requirements as far as calories, sugar, sodium, and fat, and they've actually kind of dropped out of producing school products. So that's been a bigger issue, I would say, in our supply chain at this point than the actual COVID situations that we've seen over the last couple of years. Our meal prices for twenty-three and twenty-four next school year are going to remain the same as what they are this year. So elementaries are still participating in the community eligibility provision that allows them to have free breakfast and free lunch. FMS and Ross will still be on paid or free and reduced meal application status. I do expect that we'll see more eligibility from our direct certification, which is our state list of students that don't need to apply. They're directly certified from the state and are not on an application basis that would be eligible for free meals. They, next year, they're going to be doing a pilot in Ohio using Medicaid as a qualifier. So, and I, I think that will be a great help to our students. I think we'll see a significant increase in the free eligibility without having to have an application at middle school, high school level. Put together a slide about some of the other feeding programs that the district has going on, and so I guess I'll touch on our summer program. We just recently found out that we are eligible as a rural designated site, according to USDA, to do meal packages, so non-congregate feeding where parents will be able to come through and pick up a meal package that will include five breakfasts and five lunches, the way we had done a couple summers ago. So we'll be feeding the students that are in school in the intervention programs, and we'll also be running the drive-through meal distribution. We've got some elementaries that participate in weekend meal packages.
Right, and I just wanted to point this out as well during the school year, I wanted to kind of give a shout out to both Victory Church as well as Lift, because at Kroger Elementary School, they supply, Victory Church being they, supply every other Friday backpack meals for kids to take home over the weekend, so those families don't go hungry over the weekend. And that's supplied by Victory Church. And then at Lutz Elementary School, they also have a backpack program every other Friday that is done through the Lift group, and it's for the same exact purpose that no families would not be able to eat during the weekend. So those two groups certainly help out the school district in assisting in feeding children as well.
Basically, I had to point out too, the, you see that purple and white delights, that's the, the white. For a few years ago, the white bus would go to different locations in the community and distribute meals. Well, that's not that. This is going to be an actual drive-through like we did kind of in the peak of COVID when families came through with cars, and we handed, handed them a week's worth of, right? That's the plan again then. So basically a Monday distribution for a week's worth of meal through car windows.
Correct.
Right, okay.
We found, driving the bus around to the sites, we didn't have the participation that really supported financially the continuation of that, so. Does have any questions?
One thing I would point out is I, I kid everyone that our our child nutrition programs are somewhat like the state standards for education. They move on a weekly basis, the things, the different programs that get thrown our way, and as Tracy just mentioned, up until, we were putting these slides together last week, and it was literally Friday when we finally were informed that we would be having a summer, we were chosen for this USDA summer program. Now, that's not to say in three weeks, they don't add another program where we can do something else as well, but I think that Tracy's very good about any programs that are out there getting us involved in, it's good for the community, it's good for the children, and we do participate in everything that comes our way through USDA, but it is a crapshoot from week to week what they're going to throw at us and what new limitations and rules are also thrown with those, so.
I have a question. It's, it's concerning when we hear that fewer distributors and manufacturers and producers are providing for school food because of the increased regulation and nutrition requirements. Tom, that kind of takes me back of, you know, some years back when the testing requirements changed for bus drivers, and the intention behind the legislation was to make it safer for kids. But the degree of increase, you know, to, to be eligible was just extensive. So it seemed to be more detrimental than beneficial because we didn't have bus drivers. Is, are we seeing the same thing in the nutrition? Is, is the regulation more detrimental than beneficial?
I'll speak first, or Tracy, you can speak first, and I can throw my two sons in.
We, so USDA in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen enacted some new nutrition standards. They found that students would not eat that. The long-term intentions, of course, were health benefits for the general population, but they found out very quickly that students aren't going to eat that significantly differently at school as what they do at home. So they had to kind of revise those standards, and they cut the sodium restrictions and the sugar restrictions and everything for a while, and allowed us to kind of ease into their new standards. They're proposing more restrictive standards in the next couple of years, and School Nutrition Association and most school nutrition professionals are very active in trying to promote legislation that allows us to gradually introduce those restrictions just so that we don't see, you know, students aren't going to eat something that they don't like, even if they are hungry, and that will affect the educational outcome. So there's been a huge discussion on the national level about that exactly.
Well, that was the politically correct answer. My politically incorrect answer is, yes, it's made a huge difference. Obviously, as Tracy just said, it does, it doesn't do any good to change the nutritional standards of your meals when literally we were having about 80% of the kids throwing their meals away because they didn't like them. And, you know, it goes back to, well, it's the child nutrition department's way, they shouldn't be making the meals better. But when they were so limited in what they can make and what they can use, kids aren't going to eat much differently than they do at home. They're used to, you know, the, the high sugar contents, the high sodium contents. Now, that's not to say that we have to provide that, but there has to be a median, someplace in between. And they went from here to ground level and kids just would not eat the food. And I think, I remember seeing something on television, maybe it was on 60 Minutes even where they were in a school cafeteria and they witnessed the kids just taking the food and throwing it away because they wouldn't eat it. So it's coming back the other way, but yes, it has made a huge impact, negative impact on the amount and I'm not going to say the quality because that's per your personal belief what the quality really is, but it's made a big difference in consumption in what, how much kids eat at school. So politically correct? Not politically correct?
Well, and if it's already tough to get suppliers to meet the standards of what it needs to be for school food anyway, let's put more restriction on what that food has to be so that more suppliers say, nope, forget it. So then what's going to happen? Of course, we know what's going to happen. Everybody from the USDA is going to say, well, it's the school district's fault for not being able to get this food. It's not their fault at all whatsoever. Yet, the kids can go to Kroger and get anything they want to, but the school has to be at this bigger standard.
And from reading a little bit that I read about this, what I understand producers have said is it's not hard to change their product a little bit to meet school needs, but when they were having to change it immensely to meet the qualifications for a school lunch, it, financially, they could not do it. So they just opted out of the program, which then led to, and has led to issues where it's hard to get food that meets those requirements. And a lot of people just shied away from it and it limits the suppliers down.
It just seems like it's one more area where legislatively, it's been concluded that the school is going to have to be responsible for fixing what's not happening at home.
Yep.
It feels that way.
Yes, it does. They have, they definitely have made it better recently. It has gotten better and it continues to get better. But I really think that it's, that they have been told by so many people, it doesn't do any good to have the types of food that you're regulating when kids aren't going to eat it and they're still hungry. And your school, the amount of food that's being eaten at your school lunches has decreased so much, but yet we see the à la carte items start to increase. Well, they're just buying the stuff that tastes good then, so.
All of our à la carte, excuse me, à la carte items are smart snack compliant, but they are, you know, the chips and the carbonated drinks and things like that, that students would be drinking at home and eating at home as opposed to fresh fruits and vegetables and whatnot.
I would agree with you. There needs to be a blend. We all agree that kids need to eat better than what we, most of us in the Midwest learned to grow up eating. And this is a place to teach that, but to just flip the switch hurts us economically and the health of the child.
Question on the, on the backpack program that's on this slide right here. So if someone else wanted, what does that entail? So, I mean, obviously it's only at two of our elementaries. So it just reminds me of when COVID hit and the governor shut down the schools. I just remember the very first question out of everyone's mouth for the district was, how do we educate the kids? The very second question was, what are they going to eat? And so to me, that's a huge thing for these churches to be a part of that, to do these backpack lunches or backpack program to send food home for the weekend. Because we know the kids can eat at school, but when they get home, that's a whole different story. So like, what does that entail? Do they bring the food in? Do you guys supply the food just a general?
They purchase the food completely. And correct me if I'm wrong, and Mr. Detwiler, you're probably more familiar than I am even about how this all started, but they actually purchased the food, their congregation and such purchases the food is brought in, it's packed by the volunteers from whatever church or organizations involved. They pack it into a backpack and then it's dispensed at the end of the day and the kids either walk home with it on Friday afternoon or get on the bus with it and take it home with them. And I think they, I think the way that it originated was some groups contacted Mr. Detwiler about wanting to help the school district and what could we do to help the school district? And Mr. Detwiler pointed them in that direction and then they partnered up with our principals at those two specific buildings.
So our role is really just the location?
Exactly. We, we have no money that's spent in, in those programs or anything else. And the other thing that a lot of people don't understand is the child nutrition monies is very specific. It never intertwines with the general fund. So it's what is called an 016 account. It's very specific to food service. All the salaries come out of it, all the food costs come out of it, everything comes out of it. It's 100% and so supposed to be 100% self-supported. So no dollars can travel from that account into the general fund. Now, general fund can supplant money into child nutrition, but we can't take money out and put into the general fund. And right now, we are running a nice balance because of all the reimbursements from the federal government through this program.
With the backpack, is that all the children or is that just the ones that are on free and reduced or?
Families, kind of, we worked with parents to see who was interested. So we tried to make it as targeted to families as possible. So it wasn't just kind of a broad thing. So families had to sign up.
Just wondering, because Grayson goes to Lutz, I've picked him up on Fridays and he's never come out with anything extra.
No, that's right.
Yeah, there's no qualifier for it other than they could, they signed up for it if they wanted it or not wanted it. So it wasn't based on financial, anything like that. It was just personal preference if they wanted to take meals home or parents wanted them to bring meals home.
It's also like, nothing can be easy. It's also unfortunate because sometimes there's stigma with the backpack. I mean, so it's something you have to be awful careful about and we try to be as discreet as possible. And it's like, okay, come down and get your bags. I mean, it's not that kind of thing. We try to be as conscientiously as possible. So, you know, saying, here's, here's the kids that needs food. So we do try to be sensitive. That's a big thing.
I just want to touch on that. We're actually not allowed to share free and reduced information with these kind of programs specifically to avoid overt identification of a meal status.
And a lot of things that we've put into place over the last 10 years actually has been to make it so a student in need can't be pointed out. Everybody has the same card they run through. Everybody has this. You can't tell what that card is. So very, very much mirrors kind of like the WIC program or food stamps where, you know, it used to be you tore a food stamp off and gave it to them. Now you have a card and it looks like a debit card. You can't tell when you're in the grocery store if it's a debit card or a WIC card. So that's something also the federal government's very, very touchy on when it gets into.
I'd say over the last 15 years for sure, we've gotten way better at that. I mean, it used to be, you knew, I remember lining the kids for free and reduced to the front of the line. I mean, when I was a teacher, that's just how far we've come on that whole sensitivity thing.
I remember kids in school, in grade school, that would, for free or reduced, and they went to the front.
Yep, always free and reduced people to the front of the line.
Or if your parents bought you that pink ticket.
Right.
Yep.
Right. Yeah.
That wasn't purchased, that was supplied. That was the, that was the free lunch.
You got it. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much this evening and we certainly enjoyed presenting a couple other departments that we, that we work with and they, these two people do a tremendous job managing their people, so.
And thank you all. There's a lot of information that you just supplied, not only us, but the general public about what you do and how it affects children and education. So thank you for being here.
I, I'll say, I am always happy to answer parent questions. So I've had, I think, more positive interaction with parents this year because they have just called and said, I, I don't know what's going on here. I'd like some information. And so I'm more than happy to answer questions if anybody has any.
And I think the board might be interested. I just thought of this, you know, in the fall, you, you sort of ask us to get somebody in place to start calling about overdues. I don't, Tracy, if you want to maybe touch on that, I know a little bit about it, but I don't know how much, how that's going. I know it's, it's one of those things, I think it's been effective in the sense that it's kept things under control. And maybe Megan could even speak to that, but it's, without that, I think we've been in a way worse situation without some of those reminder calls. Tracy, is that accurate?
It's, as far as negative meal balance?
Yes.
We're probably around $8,000 right now in negative meal balance, which is significantly down from what we have been in the past. Before probably the end of next week, I'll be sending out positive balance reminders to seniors so that we can make sure that seniors and parents with positive balances have a plan for that money. They can transfer it to a sibling, they can request a refund. And then of course, negative balances, we want to make sure all the seniors are able to walk and take care of all of that stuff before they graduate. And then a kind of a plan for the incoming sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, I guess, eighth graders incoming to high school so that we monitor their balances.
It definitely has solidified. It, it hasn't risen. We, we haven't conquered it, but it hasn't gotten out of control.
Right. And that's where it was headed.
Yes, and it was headed quickly. It was, yeah, it was a quick crash course in what was going to happen. So we were able to, to definitely solidify where it's at. And I think Ms. Parkers is relatively happy with what we've been able to do with it by.
Yeah, relatively. Relatively.
She's never very happy with us anyways.
Note on that also is that we haven't had any students that have come through a line that have been turned away if they have a meal. So I think that's, that's.
That was one of our goals as well.
Yeah.
I was going to say.
We don't want any student to go hungry. We want to make a plan, you know, for them to be able to get lunch and make sure that there, there's a plan in place if there's a need there. So there's resources available, you know, when, when we identify a need, but no students have been turned away for lack of ability to pay for a meal.
I think that the PR issue goes right along with the financial issue because the PR part will affect you financially later.
You bet. It all comes around.
So I like that our, our wonderful, loving lunch ladies don't have to be bill collectors, you know? And minor children who don't manage a household budget don't get asked when you're going to pay for this.
Right.
You know? So that's great.
The only thing I would add to that is this is not just a Fremont problem. This is not even just an Ohio problem. This is a nationwide issue. We've gotten so many articles over the last couple of months about how it's affecting everywhere. Like there, it's just insane how much meal debt is such a problem everywhere. It's not just a local thing. So it's not that, it's just our families, it's everywhere that this is a problem, so.
Thank you, Mr. Amway. Thank you, Tracy. Tim, thank you very much. All right, you can see we've got quality people in place here, for sure. To return to the report, if I can, just a couple of other things real quick before we start our regular agenda items. We're full-blown into testing, aren't we, Mrs. Hurt? We are, we are. It's, it's a full go. It's what we do. And I'm hearing good reports back from principals that kids are taking it seriously. I think the teachers are doing a great job getting kids prepared, so we will see, we will see. Also, I may have told you I did, we sent out a student survey that we hadn't really done since I've been here, asking kids, you know, if they feel safe at school, if there is an adult that cares for them, some of the same questions we ask our staff. So I'm looking forward to getting the results and sharing them with you very soon. So sent that out, I think started last week. We're going to run that the rest of this week and then have some numbers. So pretty excited about that. So that's really my report. Mr. Price, we can continue on if it's okay?
Yep.
All right. Item one, some donations. I'd like to thank Amy Beiser for some cash for the FMS Chess Club, Faith Lutheran Church for some snacks for Atkinson, Green Bay Packaging gave some cardboard to our FMS Art Club. I'm sure they went crazy with that. Ideal Bakery for some donut boxes for middle school, Promedica Health Systems for some surgical gloves for Ross High, and Cecilia Williamson for some school supplies at Otis.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve item one, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
All right. This next one is very special. I'd like, I've got a few letters, if I may. I did purposely a short report so I could take a few moments with these letters. First, I got a letter on top of this from Aaron Parker, asking us to recognize Ms. Janet Miles for her role and what she's done here in Fremont City Schools. So just a couple of letters. Amy Fuess, Atkinson Elementary Media Aid, said, "Her love for her career still shines through even after retirement. To recognize Janet for her dedication in the media field would be the highest compliment." Marcia Brockway, Media Aid, Lutz School, "What a blessing it has been to know and work with Janet Miles. It'd be wonderful if she could be recognized for all that she has done and still does for us." Charlene Wilhelm, and I'm just reading a portion, I've just highlighted a line or two out of each one. There's, there's paragraph after paragraph of, of, of things that Janet has done for us. For Charlene, "Janet is a true gift to the gift, sorry, true gift to the school district and deserves the honor that she has earned," or does that, that she deserves, excuse me. This one is, Mike Gilbert and Art Bucci co-wrote a letter.
How did that happen? How did Mike get any words in there? Art usually takes over the whole.
I'm going to say Mike took the lead, but Art gave the ideas. I don't know, something probably like that. Art's the idea guy probably might, might be the follow-through. I don't know. "Anyone involved in education knows that countless after-school hours are required to take anything to the next level. Janet has done this and more. She's a great example of the dedication necessary to be successful, not only as an educator, but as a librarian and a person. Art and I know that this is well-deserved." Terry Thompson, Otis Library Aid, "As the elementary library's weeded collections in preparation for the move to new buildings, Janet was there. As we packed boxes after school, schools were closed in March, Janet was there. When any of us had questions about how to catalog a book or how to run a report in our library programs, Janet was there. She continues to be a fixture in our schools and I believe that this honor is well-deserved." Mary Reinhardt, Ross High School Media Aid, "Janet could be seen at the middle school library from sunup to sundown and on the weekends, doing what she did best." Kimberly Beardmore, Assistant Principal, Fremont Middle School, "Janet Miles is the exact example of the quote, 'It takes more to be a little giant and more is expected.' Janet definitely went beyond all expectations in her service to the Fremont City School District." Laura Schwabel, FMS Media Specialist, just a couple more. "She also has volunteered countless hours to help the elementary and high school librarians with book fairs, inventory, and the arduous task of downsizing and packing the library collections in preparation for a move to new buildings." Melissa Detwiler, previous librarian, Fremont City Schools, "Her wit at staff meetings is legendary." And I can witness that. She, she was one of the first people in the building and one of the last to leave every day. She suffered through the remodeling of the Fremont Junior High back in the mid 1980s. She transitioned as the building changed from a junior high to a middle school in the mid 1990s. She paved the way for the use of computers and technology from the earliest time that they were used at Fremont City Schools. Randy Ivy, FMS Social Studies Teacher, "I think, I can't think of no better way to help her legacy live through than this honor. She has helped me reimagine ways to teach and to incorporate the use of our resources in the classroom and I will forever be grateful for the time I spent planning with her." Board Our Policy FF says, "From time to time, the Board of Education may wish to commemorate a school or district facility by means of a plaque or naming a facility after a person. Such commemoration should be reserved only for those individuals who have made a significant contribution to the enhancement of education generally for the district in particular or the well-being of the district and community." I would like to propose that we name the middle school library. Miles Media Center, sorry. That's item two.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve item two, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. I'll open it up to discussion. Second by Ms. Lewis. I'll open it up to discussion.
I'm like, I can't.
All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you, Board. Janet, be approved if you want to say anything or not.
Well, that's certainly not necessary. What I want to say is, these ladies are remarkable. They are a family to me. I worked for 37 years for Fremont City Schools, starting with the junior high, and moved on, lots of just different challenges. We went from film script projectors.
Film strips.
Film projectors.
Macros players.
Beta DVR, whatever those, dated VHS, to pushing computers and all that kind of stuff. It was constantly changing. That's what I loved about it. And I guess after 37 years, I thought, I don't want to really give this up. And they are gracious enough to accept me in terms of, well, book fairs used to be the bane of my existence, and now I'm, and weeding and inventory and things like that. And I so appreciate what they do. They are so creative, so dedicated. And they are amazing. When Melissa left and I inherited the coordinator's position for the elementary, it really opened my eyes to what they did and do. And they are just an amazing group. And Mary at the high school as well. Shar, we worked together for a long time. Just, just, we're, we're a sister blood. That's all I can say. And Lori, oh my gosh, I'm so, I thank every day that Lori is in the middle school. So I really don't, I mean, I, look, now, this is always said, I thought after I, after I passed and my cremains could be in a little lunchbox. I thought, I guess I won't have to do that anymore.
That's more appropriate now than ever, I'd say. There she is, right there in the lunchbox.
Well, we had some good times at the middle school.
We certainly did. I was right down the hall. We had a great time. Yeah. Well, Janet, that's just like you, to, to pass on credit to others.
Well, they, they deserve it. They really do.
And so do you. All right. Moving on, item three, approval of A&amp;G Education Services. This is our LEAP. This is for a few students who need an off-site placement for special education. They will travel to Toledo for that. That's for the 2324 school year. Item four, this is for extended school years, E S Y. That is for resilience therapy for summer school, for those students who qualify. Item five, resilience therapy, this is actually for next school year. That's the 2324, same organization, one for summer, one for next fall. Item six is a three-year contract or healthcare process consulting. This is a third party that takes care of all of our Medicaid billing, right? Yeah. So they, they pay for themselves very quickly. I know that's a lot of money, but there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that we get back from Medicaid with their help. So that's a very well-spent money, I think. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve items three through six, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Price. Item seven, starts our policies. We had our policy meeting last week. So items seven through 11, most of these, I think, we got through that agenda pretty quick with our policy committee, all recommended through our Ohio School Board Association. So this will be first reading of those this evening.
Can I get a motion to approve items seven through 11, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? The one thing I would say, being on the policy committee, the dyslexia piece is new, and it goes into effect where, correct me if I'm wrong, John, is it first and second, first and second grade teachers next school year?
That's right.
Have to have this.
Credential, basically.
This credential, and it's going to be added on each year after that. So.
It's a tremendous change for us. A lot of 12 hours of training per teacher. It's just a tremendous effort. I could go, I don't want to get my soapbox yet, but anyway, it's, it's coming.
Right. And I know Denise was talking that a lot of this is already in our iReady that we already use. So it was an easy transition for our district, at least, to be able to accommodate some of the recommendations from that and stuff.
That's right. We have to identify students that are falling behind in reading, and then if it's a dyslexia thing. So the iReady that we currently use for almost everything, gifted education, special education identification, now we'll use for dyslexia. So I think it's still a tool. And then we also want to retest kids. You know, can imagine if you had one test for gifted, one test for special education, maybe one test for dyslexia, kids would be taking all these tests. So luckily, we've got kind of an efficient system ready with one, one test can tell us all of that.
The only thing I would like to make a point of is, and I, I understand this, and I don't think that it's, I think it's a good thing. I mean, if we can identify kids at an earlier age, great way to do it. The only thing I would say in light of the voucher bill, the backpack bill, all of this other stuff, my question would be to our state legislatures and also Ohio Department of Education, if we are truly doing this to help children out, my question would only be is, are non-public schools having to put all of their staff with this? And I'm not saying they shouldn't or should, I'm just asking, level playing field here, we're putting this on, I mean, it's eventually going to be every elementary teacher over the next couple of years, is that correct, for the dyslexia part?
Yep.
So again, it goes back to, but do other places have to, if we're looking out for the best interests of our children, which I believe it does, then that should be qualified for every student in the state of Ohio, not just public school students. So.
I hear you.
I'll get on my soapbox.
You're right.
And we will hold you up.
Any other discussion on that? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you very much. Student staff, or student section, we have a new graduate for the 22-plus Adult Diploma Program, Ms. Selena Flores. So with your permission, I will take care of getting her a Ross High School diploma.
Can I get a motion to approve item 12, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Laird. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Okay, well, we haven't met for a little while. And in the meantime, we've had a few resignations. You're going to recognize some names here that have been around a very long time and have served this district with, with integrity and dedication. So, and we've got a few even to add that I think you'll also recognize. But tonight, we have Mr. Randy Mako, has kind of made the big decision. That was a big one, too. He was emotional when he told us. It was a, it's a big thing. So we will certainly miss Randy and his presence. You talk about presence. He's, he fills a room, for sure. Ms. Debbie Cheek, another one, been at it for a very long time for us. Shelley Fannin, I mean, that's, right? I mean, some of these people, I think, I'm not sure, what would it be like without them? Because they're such institutions in our district. Jordan Marvin, Vicky McAfee, another one, right? Julie Measley, Julie and I came in very similar times at Otis a long time ago. I taught with Ms. Measley at Otis. Kalen Sandwich, Intervention Specialist at Ross. Shal Wilhelm, who's been just a leader of teachers in the district for a very long time. Kenneth Missler, Custodian Two at Lutz, and Marie Ontiveros. And then three to walk on, you might put your paper there close to your, your desk or at your tables there. Mark Gideon, Teacher and Coach at Ross High School, another institution in the, in the building. And his wife, Melinda Gideon, started, like, when I did, back at Otis, back in the day, and is currently at the middle school. And then Stetlana Tarnovsky is resigning art at Atkinson and Otis. Item 14, some approvals. We have a new custodian, two, Damian Davis, pending approval. Samantha Griffin, Custodian One. You see at the top of page seven, then, a couple of support substitutes, I mean, support staff substitutes, excuse me, Kelsey Prescott, Paula Schefflin, and Maria Isasi. Item 15 are some supplemental duty positions. First one there is Aaron Hammer as a varsity assistant softball coach. Item 16, it lists some special event workers, got baseball, softball announcer, softball tennis, and so forth. Item 17, special event workers. Just notice that Chad Byrne is only eligible for non-Fremont City School events for rented facilities. Item 18, these are appointments for our summer elementary intervention program. We do now have our two leaders who will go out and start recruiting their staff for our summer intervention programs. Michael Schwartz will be the K2 leader, and that is at, which building? Is he going to be at Krogan? Lutz, thank you. I'm sorry, Denise, thank you. And then Mr. Matts will be at Otis for the older students, three through, three through five. Item 19, seasonal mowers, it is that time. Thomas Lewis and Richard Shear, with your approval, will help us keep the grass under control. Then item 20, an unpaid leave of absence. We have two of those, Anita Rodriguez Morales and James Slick. Those are our personnel items for this evening.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve items 13 through 20, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you very much. Item 21 is just what we heard about this evening from Ms. Rush, the Purple and White Delights Meal Pickup Program at Ross High, every Monday from 11 to 1:00, 11:30 to 1:00.
Can I get a motion to approve item 21, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Laird. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you very much. Item 22, this is National Volunteer Week. So with your approval, we will formalize our appreciation for all of those folks.
Can I get a motion to approve item 22, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
And item 23, and I can't take any credit for this. I'm not that good of a planner, but it is School Library Media Month. We would like to, kind of, probably should have done that when they were here, right? Still, all the things that our, our libraries and our media centers do for our students, you know, and I, I give the board credit and I thank our leaders credit that we, we kept libraries. You know, there are schools that just didn't keep libraries. There aren't books, centralized book libraries in schools. And that's something that this board and I know I appreciate and value. So we did, and I'm proud of that. So your approval will kind of recognize Library Media Month.
Can I get a motion to approve item 23, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved. All right, moving on to Report of the Treasure.
Good evening. Not too much to report on this month. Next month, we will be having our five-year forecast. I know you're all excited. Yay!
I am.
You can't wait. And I'll like spend an hour and go over every detail. It does look like it's hopefully going to be better than years in the past, so that's a positive. Spent last week, a couple of days last week at the Ohio School Business Association of Ohio. I don't know what all the letters are. But it was some really good conference time with different school officials, a lot of treasures, and there was a lot of really good topics that were brought up, some that we hate, whether it's the levees that we have to jump through all the hoops with, or the house bills coming up. But it was really good discussion, and there was some really good information that was shared at that conference this last week. But tonight, I have just a couple of things for recommendation. The financial report for March, it's looking pretty good. The one big thing to highlight is with our expenses, the salary and benefits looks like it's, we're a million higher than last year. Also, it really comes down to is we had three payrolls in March this year and had two last year. Payroll's about a million dollars a pay. So that's why from this year to last year, we're a million dollars higher. So otherwise, we're pretty much running pretty good this year. I love the investment income. It's one of my favorite things right now. But we will try to reap all the benefits of that as we can right now. And then item 25, we just have some appropriations for different things that came up. For the most part, the student activity accounts, those 200s and are just really that it came down to. They did more fundraisers, so we have to increase their amount to expend. They have to spend money to make money in those accounts. The big one, food service, you will see $117,000 that we had to increase. Comes down to food prices. We've been doing really good with what we have, but supplies and foods have gone up. So we did have to increase that for this year. And then you'll see down at the bottom, there's a lot of Title I, Title II, Title III. That was, we had carryover from last year that finally made its way to us this late in the year. So we had to increase the appropriations to account for that money.
Can I get a motion to approve item 24 and 25, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Laird, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion?
I have a question on the food service amount. Mr. Anway said that food service right now is, is running a nice balance.
Yes.
Does that, does that get to carryover from one academic year to the next?
Yes. Yes. It is running at a, I was trying to see if I had the exact number right in front of me. I think we're sitting right around 800,000 in that account that will carry over into next year, which is pretty good for us. If you've remembered in years past, where General Fund has had to kick in 70,000, 100,000, like, that's really good for us to be able to carry that over into the next school year. And it really comes down to the higher increased federal reimbursements that we had been getting.
So this isn't necessarily the General Fund moving money?
No, 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 no. Yeah, I'm sorry.
And it'll be funded through that carryover balance?
Yes.
So we don't have an increase in expense?
No.
This is an accounting shift?
Yes. This is just so that we can.
Pay the bill.
Yep, pay the bill. This is not moving money from food service, or from General Fund over to food service.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Okay. And then my last item tonight, we are moving to a new capier contract with Perry Protec. I'm so happy to say that it looks like we'll be able to save probably about 20,000 a year at least with them. So we were, when we got in a couple of different bids from a couple of different companies that came in, and there shouldn't be any sort of huge shift for our staff. They should run pretty comparably with what we currently have. So we'll be having new machines come in this year and some training that goes along with that for staff coming up. So.
Can I get a motion to approve item 26, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Mrs. Bloom. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Laird?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved. Moving on to Board Member Communications. Lori?
I took notes. There's a lot of stuff going. Congratulations to Selena Flores.
Congratulations to Selena Flores on her diploma. Always a great thing to hear, people being able to achieve that. All the donations that we've gotten from the public and private. Janet Miles on her, on the library, that's pretty, that's awesome. And to hear all the good things and then wonderful things that people have nothing but to say about her.
Legit.
Mr. Amway and Tracy Rush for their presentations, and Tim Warren. And congratulations to all the retirees. Holy cow, that's a lot of teachers. Some of them I, I didn't have, but my kids had, or Grayson's had, and Mr. My gosh, the principal.
Mako.
Mako. Grayson just loves him.
Sure.
So it's gonna be interesting to see how this all goes.
Yep.
So, other than that, I'm done.
She tell?
Well, again, that was such an honor to get to, to name a facility. Boy, that, that means you've left a legacy.
Yeah.
And it sure, sure
That's the first I've ever done in my career. That's the first I've ever done that anywhere.
And, and what a wonderful place to do it, in the library. You know, there's a lot of athletic things, and those are wonderful and beautiful, too. This is really, this is really something special. And appreciate her service. And talk about the tenure in the, you know, the staff that's retiring. They've been cornerstones for children's lives for a couple of generations now. And I'm the same age, so I'm not trying to age anybody. Right there with you. Right there. But that's significant. And I think that says a lot about what kind of a community we're from, that people would come and stay and contribute and participate the way they did, especially in the difficult arena of education. You know, and the changes that they've seen from the start of their career to now, and expectations in every direction, and they hung in there for such great service. So hats off to you and appreciate you all very much.
Sarah?
Mrs. Miles, like, you can't talk about the library in Fremont City Schools without talking about, you know, Mrs. Miles and all she's contributed and how she's helped so many, you know, kids throughout the years, and, and staff. I remember her wheeling the TV on a cart with the VCR on it. You know, from one floor, you know, to
And that TV weighed about a hundred and fifty pounds, too. I mean, I think that was a big, big thing with big tubes.
Yeah, tripping hazard and everything. But there she was with the, you know, smile on her face, you know, helping to provide what was, at that time, cutting-edge technology, you know, for all of us, all of us students. So it was truly an honor to be able to be a part, a teeny-tiny part of giving somebody their flowers while they can smell them, if you will. Thank you to Mr. Anway and your crew for the presentation today. Every time we have a presentation like this, I know I learn a lot. And just get some reality to what it takes to run a school system effectively. And your department is certainly a huge piece of that. The Victory and Lift churches, I had no idea that they were, you know, donating on their own accord to children and families who, who are in want or need, however you, you know, want to look at it. I don't think that our community at large knows how many children and families have food insecurities. Food insecurity is great or small. And things like this help bring those things, you know, to light. It's the end of the school year. So here's my mom's speech, I guess, for every, for all of us, parents and, and students in the district, you know. We want everybody to finish, finish the school year strong. Attendance still matters. So, you know, sometimes it's harder to wake up. The closer you get to May, it's harder to wake up in the morning to get, you know, to school, but it's definitely important that, you know, we keep on with the, you know, good attendance and make sure that our kids are getting to school on time and there every day. Parents finish strong, keep monitoring progress book and all those tools and, and people to access to, to help keep our kiddos on track through the end of the school year. Seniors and senior parents, it's go time. We gotta, gotta make sure that we're all on task. So if you're not sure if your senior parent, or if your senior child is, is on task, make sure you contact Mrs. Huth at Fremont Ross for any assistance that you might need. And that's it.
So she brought in the TV and the VHS for you. I'm sorry to say, she wheeled in the projector and the big wheel. Yes, that's how long she's been serving us.
We definitely had a few film strips in my, in my day. But it went from the, you know, the projector to the one that, you know, looked more rectangle, more high-tech, so.
I'm just gonna reiterate what other board members have said. Mrs. Miles, thank you for all the years, even though you're retired, although I'm not sure that you're actually retired, because it sounds like you're
Still here. She's everywhere.
Good fit for the volunteer month.
Yeah.
You know, she's still volunteering after all the years of service. So congratulations to, for her and, and for all the work that she's put in, and well-deserved to have that library named after her. So congratulations to Selena Flores for putting in the work to get that diploma. That's the fun part, like you always say, John.
Good stuff.
The work that you put in to do that, to know that it's important to get back and get that high school diploma.
And at Fremont Ross, yeah, not just any diploma.
Right, right.
A little giant.
Yep. Thank you to all the volunteers and the donations to Victory Church and the Lift Program, like Sarah said, for the backpack lunches. That affects more than just kids, it's families. So you, you never know exactly how many you might be affecting, but man, that could make or break somebody for a weekend with that extra food going home with them on the bus, so. Tom, to you and your crew for the information. I think the biggest thing out of that is, how many miles are bus drivers driving a day, let alone a year?
Yeah.
And how many meals are served across this district? That's just crazy. I mean, to think that we do that on a daily basis, that takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of hard work. So thank you to all those staff members that put in all that time and everything. To the retirees, like everyone has said, man, there's some ten-year people on there, you know, well over a couple hundred years of service there, easily. So that's a lot of years of teaching that's retiring this year. So congratulations to them. Good luck on their, whatever their next endeavor might be in life. So last thing for me is Tuesday is Election Day. We get to have the right to vote. Yes, Megan. So it's our right, but it's also our privilege that we get to go out and vote. And I think it's important for everyone to, to exercise that right, no matter what's on the ballot, who you're voting for, or anything else. We need to take the time to do that, so. With that, I believe that we are moving into executive session under item M. Is that correct?
It would fit.
So we'll go under item M for executive session. Just so the public knows, there will be no more board action taken afterwards. We'll adjourn immediately after we're out of executive session. So I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session under item M. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Laird. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Laird.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Motion's approved. We are now in, moving into executive session.